Okay, we'll call the Ramsey County official meeting to order. Let's do the pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to thank Mr. Johnson and Mr. Elke for coming to share your time with the county commissioner today, a lot of legislators, and update us. You can fill us in on it, we appreciate it. And we'll let you start off until when everyone wants to.
I'm trying to get him to sign under this bill here, but he's...
He wants to read the damn paper.
Well, do you sign your name later?
I've seen guys sign under bills that have come down and testified against the bill after a day. I don't want to find myself having to do that. Well, an update, we had our organizational session. The governor has proposed budget address during joint session. As far as parking places and seating back, I'm still in the same place, they're looking for me. Chairman of the A committee again, I'm back on education, so as far as always been, so I feel probably more comfortable there. You know, folks are involved in our school boards and super dens and the people that you've worked with. So I was glad to get back there again. As far as his numbers or what we had to offer for the counties, I think a good senator here is on appropriations. See if I have this a little sharper. Obviously, we don't get into it, we get into it down there. I mean, we heard the reports and stuff. They go out of surprise, they really caught, they caught all of us. It probably is the fact that they're gonna probably go to women's prison from New England, I caught everybody. When did we talk about this, Dave? You know, even legislators, well, we didn't know a lot, so that one's sure maybe six o'clock at least.
Yeah, that's...
I don't know what's gonna happen there before that's done. There's certainly a lot of people back and forth to Bowman quite a bit, there are kids out there, and that was, so they're getting known out there too. What I'm telling them, this has been Johnson. He says, "The top of New England," he says, "it's sort of a split community, it's half Catholic and half nuclear." And when they got to women's prison, it sort of went four ways split out there, who is born, what religion you were. And now, he says, "The whole community has come together, they went to prison." So I don't know what's gonna happen out there, but that was one issue, some of these hot topics that's been brought up, they don't get resolved before then. So I don't know, I just, few things going on, I guess. Talk earlier about some of your concerns here with the monies and the things you've got going on here and stuff, we don't have anything. I thought you had a session down there, you know, we forgot all the...
And we've got the, you know, probably the biggest thing that would affect the counties that's different from previous years would be that piece of legislation that leadership of both the senate and house put together. They call it the Prairie Dog Bill. I don't know if you've heard it called that, but somebody decided to call it the Prairie Dog Bill because if you don't vote Prairie Dogs, they're always digging. They're trying to find money. And that's why they call it that. But basically, they're taking money that typically for the last eight years or so has gone to 19 oil-producing counties. They're gonna take a certain amount of that and have it distributed to the rest of the state, to the cities, counties, township. And I gave you those numbers of what, you know, approximately what it would mean to the county, you know, a couple of months ago. And of course, that was a projection. We're gonna have those discussions now when we actually get in, get into the bill because, you know, already there was someone that said, "Well, you know, we should get something in there for the short line railroads, 'cause they need help too." And hey, that's probably true. Well, is that gonna come out of the, you know, that piece of the pie? Or is it gonna take more from the 19 oil-producing counties? But basically, and the oil-producing counties agree that, you know, we did for them what needed to be done at the time it was done. We gave them a lot of money to help with roads and law enforcement and emergency services and housing, all those things that were absolutely critical to them at the time. It's not so critical anymore. The roads are built. And the oil industry has changed a lot in terms of how they drill and where they drill and how they get to and from. You know, now they're, put 12 wells on a pad. You know, they didn't used to do that. It used to be one well here, and then there'd be another one over there in that quarter, and one over there. You know, that's not the way it is anymore. So that whole world has changed some too. But basically, they don't need that aggressive type of funding out there anymore. And so, you know, we knew eventually it would come to a point where we could share some of that with the rest of the state, and so this is what it's come to. Some people have been concerned about the lower price of oil. I think, you know, today it was, I don't know, the West Texas Intermediate was the low 40s, I think. Well, when it was, you know, it used to be that the oil producers said they had to have $55 or $60 oil to make it worthwhile to drill. Well, because of their efficiency and better technology and their knowledge of the Bakken, that number has come down a lot. And not only that, their efficiency has allowed them to pump more oil. 10 years ago, when Ron Ness, who's the president of the Oil Producers Association, but he's actually from Toma area, when, you know, he said, "You know, they tell me, these oil producers tell me we're gonna be pumping 500,000 barrels of oil a day. We were at the time, we were pumping about 250, 300." And I said, "Oh my God, how can we?" He said, "And they tell me that it will get to a million." Well, last month, it was 1,300,000.2, I think, barrels of oil per day. So even though the price has gone down, the amount of oil being produced is, they say it's gonna go to 2 million barrels a day. And I believe them because of what I've seen happen. And part of it's because of the technology. And then that price of oil per barrel, you know, what it costs when they're fracking or drilling, hey, they can do it with $30 barrel, $30 oil now. So, you know, even though people are, get a little bit nervous when they see the oil price drop from an income standpoint to the state, they don't mind that the pump, when the price is down a little bit too. So, all in all, I, you know, what's happening in that part of our state is working out to be kind of a good deal for us all around, is keeping our price of oil down when we go buy gas. And it's all, we're pumping enough of it so we can put money into the treasury. And it's also building the legacy fund so that there's more interest there. And I know the governor has big plans for using a bunch of that interest for some various projects. Well, those areas have to be determined, you know. New governors are always surprised that what they say isn't always the way it comes out in the end. But they get used to it, and they learn how to, you know, work with legislature. But, you know, everybody has interests, and they all care. And in the end, we all want the state to work across the board, not, you know, not just be better for us. Our biggest job, Dennis and Greg and I, is creating good relationships with our legislative friends in Fargo because they have a lot of votes. You know, and if they're on our side, they understand why we need what we need. And same with Bismarck, Minot, Grand Forks, you know, if they can be sympathetic to our needs, that's huge. You know, without them, there would be times when we would have struggled to give the money we did for biking and that type of thing, for instance, and for outlets. And now we have all kinds of other problems with water. Now we need more.
So I think one thing that, when Dave talks about building relationships, we've got Chet Pollard down here as our majority leader. I think, probably mostly know Chet, but he's got the heat business in New Oxford there. I think a pretty good friend of Earl North Dakota here. He's obviously chaired the human resource section of appropriations for the last 10 years. So he understands social services, and he's been instrumental in helping us get to where we've gotten to be with the funding and social services back to the counties. And look forward to working with him.
Yes, I think he should be very beneficial to Earl North Dakota. You know, we talked about Fargo, Dave, and they're looking for money for their diversion, I'm sure they'll get it. But, you know, they need friends for that too. You know, they need your vote, Dennis' vote, they need Earl's vote. So there's gotta be something he can take, and I'm sure there is. Chet seemed to be pretty comfortable with it, Dennis?
Yeah, I just talked to him last evening for a bit, and he said it's probably all of what he thought, maybe a little bit more than what he thought. I mean, his phone rings pretty steady, you know. Obviously, before session, all the interest groups are making sure they are acquainted with Chet. He's looking favorably at what they have in mind, you know, that you can sort through all equity best, too.
One of the things you mentioned, social service, we have Rhonda here, and I'm sure she's got some questions. But one of the things we're very concerned about is keeping these directors under the county wing. I mean, I don't believe the state needs to take them on. The directors, you know, the county hired the directors, they brought them up. From what I hear, the directors don't want to be under the state's wing. I just don't feel we want that at all. You know, I think we need our local control as far as, we can do a better job, you know, running the social service within our county than the state does, so.
So are you hearing from the state? Is there, are those Rhonda hearing?
Let's hear it, Rhonda.
Did you hear me, Rhonda?
Yep.
What, did you hear it?
Well, there's 112 bill, proposed legislation, 12-page legislation, and there's a lot of changes for state's attorneys with the zonal and switching from just county and zonal, and there's a lot of language cleanup. And it calls for state employment of the directors. I think there's a huge, I mean, it's a huge thing to have control over services and make service continuity of services across the state, you know, what's available in Devil's Lake is not always available in Dunn County, Divide County. So I think that's the thought process behind it, and I understand that. I think when you start getting people who make decisions farther and farther away from the people who need the services, you have huge problems. And I think our human service centers have kind of bored that out with, they're pretty unresponsive to the needs of the community. And so I think that's an issue that really needs to be looked at and thoughtfully studied as to how that this should work. And I get that, and I've actually heard Chet Pollard say this exactly, not, I can't quote him exactly, but if we're paying the bill, we're gonna have some say over what goes on, and I totally get that also. So I think it's a really, it'll be interesting to see how that shakes down. But we certainly have the ability to build efficiencies and capacity, we have a lot of capacity throughout the state where, you know, some counties have seven foster care cases and have a full-time social worker. We're dogging away with, you know, our caseload is very manageable, we've worked hard at that. And I've gotten really good support from our social service board to hire extra people to keep those caseloads down so we can do that good work of engaging parents, keeping services, giving services to parents, advocating for them, engaging them with the school and working hard. So I think there's just a real fear with county directors, and I don't want to speak for all of them. I don't know that they, of course, they didn't sign up to be state employees. A lot of them have a lot of loyalty to their counties and want to provide those services locally. So I think it's gonna be an interesting conversation.
Prairie Dollar creating districts, right? The way it's proposed now, they're gonna create districts, you know, be a state employee in charge of a district, is that right?
Right, a zone, and I'm losing the words right now, but, and I know you're on North Dakota Association Counties, and you guys talk about this a lot. So there would be a operations, zonal ops person, and, yeah. So that would oversee, and I guess, you know, there's, and then there's also a fear, people want to have jobs. They want to know that they're going to have a job. And I'm not any different, I'd like to have a job. Although, I think that the first matter at hand, this legislative session, is to make sure that we get a good product for the citizens we serve and make sure we continue, we advocate for services close and local to the people that we serve. And I'll think about that later, I'm sure there'll be a spot for me somewhere. I don't know what the job will be, but if we do go state employment, I don't know. So I, we're kind of trying to get people to look forward and pass that. For right now, we really need to look at the services and the people we serve and advocate. Because children and elderly and disabled people don't really have a voice as far as services go, so. And not that I don't want to preach or anything like that, but I think that's really important to remember because that's dogging the human service center. But when services get farther away from the people they serve and the decisions are made farther and farther away, they're no longer relevant to people. And you get, I mean, look at the behavioral health crisis we have. We have no services, we have a shortage of services here to serve people. And I think if there were a local board controlling the human service center, I don't know that commissioners that have to be responsible to people who have children with addiction issue, parents, family, friends, could look at their friends and neighbors and say, "No, we just can't get them an addiction counselor, come here, sorry." I don't think it would fly. So that's my little speech about that, that'll be quiet. But, so that's the worry, I think.
As we get into this process, so we're gonna need that kind of input. John Nelson over at Rugg is gonna chair the, took Chet's position on chairing that human resource section. He's been around human services long enough to have an understanding, I hope.
Was he vice chair then before?
No. He was, no.
He was on the committee.
He was on the committee.
Well, I think finances, Christie handles the finances, but I mean, social service, I think that's worked out real well. I mean, how much are we over this year about, what was it at? You know, Christie, you know?
How much should we have taken from the county, you're saying?
Well, yeah.
400,000, should be in that range.
So it's worked out relatively pretty simple.
Yeah, and I don't know how the, how the social services bill is gonna look, but I know the governor did have in his proposed budget had an increase from, was it 1, yeah, 160 to 182. So I would guess that would be closer to like a 2019 baseline of overall funding. So that would, that would be good, that we wouldn't have to fill in the gap either. But I think, you know, we have our social service board being last name, and I can just reiterate the point of, and I just put Rhonda was talking, but I think that's a big point to us is, if you have a state zone over, you know, supervisor basically, or director, or whatever you want to call it, then what happens to the zone board, you know? You're gonna have to function a zone board and put it together. Then really, the zone board is just advisory at that point. And you know how much teeth an advisory board has, personally, huh? Other than just to say, you know, we think we need to do some more here, but if you don't have the first strings, you pretty much have no control. Or at least overseeing who's overseeing everyone, so.
And we all know what they're gonna do with that zone board, or the person that's running three counties, let's say what they're doing here. And they'll get directed by the state what to do. So input from the local level will be very limited, and we all know that's what, how it's gonna work. I don't really think you need somebody overseeing three counties. I think it's up to the counties to run it. You know, if they're doing it within a manageable financial situation, I think the state should be happy. I mean, the counties are sure are gonna be happy because, you know, they're getting the tax rate, the property taxes aren't going away on them, and they should be able to be running quite well. I know one of those Ramsey and Towners, been together since I've been on the commission and been together before that. And it worked out real well. I mean, I, they got about, what, 11, 12% of the budget? About 11 or 9, what is it?
It's 12 to 13 percent, yeah.
And they're happier now, I mean, they think it's a great deal.
So is this a mutual feeling across the state?
Well, without that, she's been on that advisory committee.
Actually, I'll let, you have a good review.
So we're in the Negroes, so I mean, we get to honor, we're gonna have it out the state, you want it one way, have it the other way?
Negroes not in favor of these zones either. Or, I should say, the state employee. The director should be county employees.
We go to honor and represent, represent your feelings, and then we've got Fargo grand enforcement, or hey, we don't want that way.
They're gonna leave them alone, right? They're gonna leave them alone.
They have their own zones here.
Look at like 60,000, they have their own big little zone.
Yeah, I don't think there's any pushback from us on the concept of the zone. I mean, we see the benefits between Ramsey County, Towner County, working together. I mean, I don't think there's any argument that we can become far more efficient if we share services and we can save money. Hopefully, would be, in the long run, would be the goal by sharing services. It's just a matter of who controls the oversight at the local level. Is it gonna be a board overseeing the director, or is it gonna be a board chipping in and saying things that the director's really has to take, you know, the direction from the state?
Do you feel that this is getting away from what the association of counties intended when they came out with the idea in the first place? Me and Terry Traynor and Benella and Aaron Burst are, you know, they, they certainly are probably three of the best lobbyists that are in the Capitol. You know, and they know their stuff, and they're very good at communicating. Are they doing the job for us that we're looking for?
I think so.
Rhonda's shaking her head. What do you think, Rhonda?
I think they're doing a really, really good job. I think you'd agree, right, Kevin?
Yeah, no, it wasn't the association of counties that had the state employees, that was a...
Whoever wrote the bill, the 112-page bill, it was kind of a surprise. We had input through HCVS committee and admin committee and a child and family committee and, or four committees, financial committee or economic assistance committee. We didn't get a look at the bill till it was sent out. It would have been nice to chew on this and talk about this in the, in the admin committee. I think Terry was a little surprised that it was just kind of given to him. It's, there's a lot of cleanup, a lot of housekeeping cleanup, I hope they can do before they give it to the first committee. I think it's gonna be introduced in the senate human service committee. Is that what you understood, Kevin?
Yep.
And it needs to be, it's, there's a lot of cleanup, I counted, I, yeah, I went through it twice, and there's, yeah, a lot of cleanup.
And if the cleanup isn't done, then we'll just walk down into session.
So I'm hopeful that, I think, I think they know who wrote it. They're gonna try to get to do some cleanup prior to...
It's all lengthy and wordy that nobody, if they get it at the last minute, they're not gonna have any time to read it. You know, it's over 400,000 words, 100 of all pages. Yeah, it's, it's an ugly looking document. And like you said, a lot of cleanup, so.
Terry Traynor did a nice analysis, and I could send that to Senator Elke and to Representative Johnson if you're interested. It's a, it's a, it's a nice document. He did a good job.
We won't see it till after crossover, and it'll probably be 50 pages, and it's a lot different.
Yeah, I meant the analysis, I would send you the 112, please, Doc.
Yeah, I guess coming from the aspect of myself, I don't think there's a lot of, like I said before, I don't think there's a lot of argument about the intent of, the idea of can we streamline services? Can we save money? And I don't think, if you don't speak into the association of counties, that won't make it four years, but I would assume that they had the thought that once the state picked up the bill, they were gonna want some kind of controller streamlining of services, obviously. So I don't think they're surprised that this is the way we're going, but I think there's just those little things, like who's gonna have the final say on things and stuff like that, there just needs to be hash. I would move in there, I think. Just a matter of a lot of, a lot of talking, a lot of work, a lot of getting people on board.
And that's when we need the people like Rhonda, who wants to come in to explain to the people on the committee what is going on out in the country, and why it should stay this way.
Don't worry, I'll come down and bother you.
That's what makes a difference, you know?
Yeah, it is, yeah. As much as, as much as we'd like to think that everybody's the same, that's not true in state arc, but I'm always quite amazed at people from other parts of the state that, you know, are very surprised at certain things that we deal with in our region because of the dynamics of the population. You know, they're just surprised, and I think, well, what rock have you been hiding under, you know? But, that's the way it is. And so that's part of our job, you know?
Yep.
And part of Rhonda's job, we get it down there, and part of Terry and Aaron and Benella. From the association of counties standpoint, they get people informed so they can make an intelligent decision and not just follow the crowd.
Right.
To comment on Dennis's question about, you know, are 50% of the counties gonna be one way and 50% of the other? I don't know how it's gonna split out, but there are some counties that are not on board with the zone idea at all. I know there are some counties that are questioning how this whole structure is gonna work. So I think you're gonna honestly hear different voices across the board, and to Dave's point, from different population, you know, bigger counties versus the smaller counties, how the delivery services is gonna work. I mean, I think there's gonna be a lot of different voices, hopefully at some point we'll come to a, you know, and that'll be up to you guys, but, you know, clarifying where we all kind of want to go. But we'll speak to the, I mean, I guess from my aspect, I'll speak to the positive of going to zones because it's worked for us, and it's helped us become more efficient, so.
And then get your lobbyists to speak with that same voice, so they represent your feelings and not the other side.
Yeah, I think the zones are fine as long as they're hopefully controlled, you know? Because we know the services that are needed out here, I mean, we've got the directors, and we've got good workers, and, you know, we take care of them financially and they get good pay. What I think is, you know, Fargo, Grand Forks, Minot, Bismarck, they're over 60,000, and I think they're all gonna stand alone. I really don't think the state's gonna do anything with them, just let them run. You know, Williston, the boys don't dig in there, Jamestown, well, they wouldn't quite fit that mold. But they're combined with who?
I think Stutsman by themselves. There's only four multi-zone districts in the state right now, or multi-county districts. Us and Central, so McLean and now...
And they're really looking at, for instance, the specialty of doing the nursing home care assets and looking at who's eligible for nursing home care. Maybe, and I'm picking on Adams and Dunn County, just, I'm just, maybe Adams County has the capacity in that they have an eligibility worker that's really good at that. Maybe we would ship our cases there, you know? We have 29 tannic cases in Ramsey County. Maybe someone in Stutsman County, not even within your zone, has the expertise to do that. Right now, what we really, counties really need to stand up and listen, we have, we're training, you know, small counties are training two people to do five cases because they need a backup. And it just fiscally, and it doesn't make sense. You need to look at the capacity of the whole state. We're small enough to build that capacity elsewhere. We're doing it now with childcare. It doesn't make sense for Benson County to train a childcare social worker to do three cases. They have a childcare center and two home daycares. We want to get more. We wanna get more, we're working on that, but it doesn't make sense for them to train someone. They spend more money in sending that person to training than they would get out of the work that they would do, so. But a lot of counties don't wanna hear that, but they still want the state to pay the bill and have the property tax relief. So it's really something that we need to, that's been hard for some of the county directors. It's like, no, we, we're getting a large bill paid here. We need to cooperate and a lot of them just wanna put their hands up and say, no, we're not doing anything different. We're just gonna continue like it's nineteen seventy and move on and that is not going to work.
We're in the process of setting up meeting with Benson County. I think we're gonna meet probably the first week or two of February. That's kind of what we're tentatively have set our goal at. And they're interested in coming into this district, so.
Yeah, we already worked with them on a couple of different things, so. We're gonna look at something to look at.
And the state's very interested in them coming with us. I mean, right, Rhonda? I mean.
They haven't been able to attract a director or they've advertised and they haven't had a director for, it'll be over a year now.
Anything else on social service?
It was my understanding that they're setting up these districts now, right? And then if you don't set them up, they'll set them up for you or something like that.
The bill, yeah, the bill has language that they'd like you to do, counties to do this on their own and look at aggregation and efficiencies on your own by
September nineteenth or something.
Yeah, September of nineteen and have them formed by January twenty of two thousand twenty, right? Or September nineteenth?
Right.
Lot of dates.
It's supposed to be formed by September nineteenth and then function will be anywhere around.
That's it, yeah.
So I guess my point to that is, you know, we should be applying for our zone. Otherwise they'll do it for us, so I'm thinking.
Right. Benson understands, Benson understands that too. I mean, they, I think they're feeling the push to do it, so.
Well, and they're probably the county that makes the most sense when it comes to creating something a little bit more efficient, a little bit more, but that doesn't mean there's not a county that might not make sense.
What is their next direction here? Egg, what are you gonna egg that is what is gonna be the hottest issue here?
Well, we have three, three bills so far.
Oh, really?
But we always start off slow.
So you're gonna, you're gonna have a board Thursday at thirty for a while.
Right, right on the street, we got the, uh, the interim, I had one bill that was for good members of the South Conservation Board. Pass to go to attend the schooling, you know, the purpose of their board tradition is, and that pretty much makes sense. And they're the ones that want the bill, language and laws of a surprise on the boards, the people on down the board that they don't wanna let school. We've had that in different cases down there. But anyway, we're gonna have training for that. They've got a pre-thought one for acknowledging freeze branding along with the hot iron bill. And that's, we've talked about that for a long time, but the Stockman come forward this time a lot, acknowledge freeze branding. One of the, Kevin's maybe aware of, the weed board. When we did rewrites over the last ten years, they tried to clean up, clean the language up in the code. And some things they took out that we didn't think we needed anymore. And one of the things that got taken out was to have a certified gravel pit of being weed free. And they had followed for the last few years. I saw the law and all, it was always, they needed inspector that's certified the pit. And there's been some projects where it's gotta be a gravel, it's gotta be a certified pit. Well, there's nobody to do the certification now. In some areas, some areas are getting somebody to do it, but it's not in statute, so that's, that's way back then. You gotta stand alone, deal market after. If you're gonna be doing downstream gravel or a pit, it has to be a certified weed free pit.
If it's going on roads?
The ground's pretty used outside of the pit. Can't have a pile of gravel, it needs to first grow from top to bottom. And I've got a couple others, Stockton have a couple others too. One is, there's a fine tuning on the animal cruelty bill that they wanna come in with. And I talked to Julie just last night on that and I think we're gonna get that one started in the senate because what happens is these groups, they come to the chairman and they want you to sponsor the bill. And I, it's not good to have this chairman on the committee, have to get up to introduce the bill during committee and every Julie got in front of you, it's tough to get the sponsor to the senate.
If somebody else steps up on.
Yeah.
What have you guys heard about?
Obviously, not to interrupt you, but in my training, talking and my, and media and stuff, I've, you know, stopped like a modern line, but but this last situation with PSC and the roaming grain buyer and stuff, there's this they gotta do something there and I'm not sure what's gonna happen. We've had meetings, we've talked about it, but there's ninety-seven roaming grain buyers, give and take a couple of way extraction orders every year. And it's, it's a situation, when you start looking at legislation like this, it's a little bit of seller beware type deal. You know who you're doing business with before you put that much on the line? And yet, there's a group that wants, wants everybody to protect each other. They come in to have another check off on our grain to protect the people that got caught in a bad situation. And there'll be resistance there because why should everybody be checking on their dollars to protect your neighbors that don't do business or the buyers? There's gonna be conversations here, I'm not sure what direction we're gonna go, but it's an issue we're gonna have to pass. We've had it before and it's gone away and now something like this happening right before session or down for pre-session, none of PSC for talking, so it's just something, something we have to look at.
Like you said, seller beware.
No, you're not, you're not protected. You go in and, and you know, you write a check for seventy-five thousand dollars of fertilizer, you're not protected? If the internet goes under, you're, you're ultra seventy-five thousand. But you know who you're doing business with. I mean, you do business with your car gills, your CHSs and your, and your cablons and I mean, know who you're doing business with. But the amount of money we're working with anymore. And yet, there's good operating result there too, like you said, there's ninety-seven roaming grain buyers. But the problem is, it only bonded for about, like this case, about four hundred thousand dollars against an eighty-dollar bill. So the coverage isn't there for a situation like this. Sorry, we have to pass a lot. If we go back all the way to roaming grain buyers and increase their bonds so they can afford bond, you know, it's that, when you talk about it's up in agriculture, that's gonna be probably a little more important than freeze branding and school interest that some conservation people still have, that's gonna be the issue. We got commodity reports, the eleventh of January, I think is the Friday, we're gonna have the, we're applying for commodity reports where everybody comes in, tells us all the good and stuff, what's happening in the commodity rules. That's a joint session, things that I know.
Well, you get, there's, isn't there something on posting a land coming out or getting to it?
We have, yeah, we had a meeting in, uh, during, during the pre-session down there. The Stockmen, there's a group of folks in the Stockmen and there's others with town trips and stuff who are involved. And we've, we've run this one up the flagpole before, but they want everything posted. So the state is posted and asked for permission. Well, the one, they really worked hard on that about six, eight years ago. And it was the entire state, and it was West River, and then it was down about five, four or five times pilot project. At the end of the day, that went away too. So it's been long enough now, new people. The group is back in again and wants to come with posting law again, so. We're looking for sponsors and all. We've been around there, we've seen this happen a couple times, so they can't get any takers right now to sponsor though like that. And you got strong arguments on both sides of the issue. And so, I mean, there's technology now too. I mean, you know, where the bots program's already, you can have a list of who is posted, who isn't posted. Electronicity, you can know right away who has that on and if it's posted or not and who to contact. So we're still looking at it. We're still looking at, that's, that's the Stockmans are the main ones pushing that piece of legislation.
Stockman, yeah.
And that, and probably more than I I just gotta say.
He's been quiet.
I'm gonna ask you a tough question.
I'll be there about four minutes and you've got this. But, but I think we find this legislation valid more western North Dakota. If it's more western, that's why the last time we had it, they finally enough resistance from the non-resident hunters and different ones, group, hunting groups and stuff that would move to West River and, and then went to Morton County and went down that part of state and now and Adam, what did you have? If you want.
Got it. He forgot.
No, I was just gonna ask you, what have you heard about NDSU extension funding? Staying with the same formula, moving backwards, going back to the old formula? Any, any talk out there about it?
The only, the only, and I, you know, maybe Dave's gonna add as far as appropriations, I know we've got a couple of fellows have been visiting with my vice chair Wayne Crowder. And we were gonna set up a couple hours for them the tenth of January, you wanna come in and present to us what's going on and the funding and such like this. Obviously, we're not in a position to make any decision there, so it's more of an educational type deal. They wanna deep up the senate and the whole side of things. Because, that day, because the eleventh, they are presenting to the, to the appropriations section. And so they just wanted to inform more people what's going on, why they'd like to see the funding if you're asking for, so. But I don't know where we're sitting as far as, obviously, being a farmer, I, I don't wanna see any cutback and I can do the help, but.
I know there's certainly talk about funding a building project there on their, their old name and, you know, ag research center. Apparently it's, I haven't been in it, but people that have are, are thinking, you know, this is supposed to be a world-class facility because they get people in from all over the place. You know, and when I say all over the place, you know, all over the world, come in and learn technology that, and, you know, it, it doesn't look like a state-of-the-art facility. So there is some interest in funding a building project there, whether that'll come to fruition or not.
So that's on campus then?
I think with the governor's budget, he had a two million dollar reduction in NDSU extension for counties.
That's why, that's why I asked the question, because I mean, we were, I don't know, we didn't say we were happy about picking up the difference, but we did it because we, we value extension in the county. I think all of us pretty heavily, but there comes a point where you keep cutting, cutting, cutting and, you know, it's pretty tough.
Yeah, that's what we're sitting on our net at that end of the year, you know, what, what does the extension do? And what are they doing in the county and stuff like this comes far as speaking on you. And I, bills, the folks have an office, creates many of the people have been involved, I think, and met. I don't know, four or five meetings now, I missed the last one. Contacted, but I think it's just bringing more of the community aware of what's going on in the extension and forage and everything that's offered up there and obviously all the comment and stuff. And so I think it's, it's part of selling what, what you have, you know, people will forget about what we have up here because we've started to abandon technology and everybody's got their crop monitor and every chemical salesman has a crop monitor and fertilizer and so sometimes they forget about the ones that have gotten this whole program going, you know, through NDSU extension and stuff and they're still there, we just forget about them, so.
And I guess to add to that, in my mind, the extension agent portion of it in the county is important, but the actual extension research centers are really big too. Having that, that, no, nobody's got any skin in the game, nobody's paying you to say one thing or the other, you're just straight doing the research and you're giving the farmers information is, is invaluable in my mind. We have to keep it that way, but I know that they continue to, I mean, the struggle because of all the cuts even last time, and if they cut another two million, oh, boy, it's gonna get, it's getting real dicey, I think.
Chet, Chet called me here a few weeks ago and they're putting committees together. And last time I had eight new members on the committee, really getting down enough to any farmer, ag-related people on the committee. And so this time I've lost a few that have moved on to appropriations and stuff. I got some new ones and he called to see, says, do you want Jay Fisher? I don't want Jay Fisher on my committee, but the experiment station in mine, now he ran for the legislature and got elected. But I think he'll be a great asset for extension and stuff.
Yeah, you can go to the experiment station and we all drive by and in the summertime, we shouldn't be stopping and spending an hour, you know? I mean, there's things to learn there, just driving up down there, rolling, so. Looking at the livestock, I mean, that's just, I heard just.
But nobody has time at that point.
You should take that.
Yep, and nobody takes the time to do those types of things. And one field trip I was invited on this summer was with the North Dakota Grazing Association. Went down to Oswald Soft Reserve, right east of Wing.
Yep.
And went down to Dolan, south of Baghdad down there. And we spent, we spent two days down there. And the governor is actually, was on a big bus, but the governor is with us all day. He walked her, we hooked up at six thirty that morning and got in about nine thirty that night. And he was with us all day and we, most of the day we didn't have cell service out in that country.
No.
But he, he was with us all day and along the rest of it, there was a lot of conservation groups, you know, a lot of folks out of DC were there. Fish wildlife people and this type of deal, but they're showing us what they're doing. I went past you and I, this isn't very something to go with, they've got this pasture and such and, and dials the eyes, it isn't, it was like four hundred and twenty-five days you hadn't done nothing on that ground. But they had what used to be one big pasture, they had probably fifty units in that one big pasture. They just put a couple hundred head in that small pasture for three, four days and moved to this one. So they came around and
Celebrating.
Celebrating and, and Dolan's down, they had seven hundred some acres of, there was twenty-some varieties of different grasses. They were seeded on that and that was his winter grazing. That's, he didn't start a tractor in winter time, he's winter grazing out there. And I, you know, I had to sit on a panel next morning and we talked about this. I was probably the only one that stuck out because I just had a hard time with that. You get feet, you snow and plenty of blow and the wind, I, I cannot, I think you have to watch your cop, you know, sheriff coming on the road, start in your animals.
Yeah, drive over the hill, that's where the hay pile is. Don't worry, they got, they got a backup plan.
But, but, you know, just why I share this with you is there is so much going on in agriculture.
Yes.
I mean, I, I consider myself an old farmer anymore and I, I wasn't even aware that people are, I knew this was going on in Montana and Wyoming and stuff, but right here in North Dakota, they're, they're raising their cattle and watering them that way.
Lots of things to learn there. I got it on my list here, I got water and I got it on kind of the bottom. And I mean, a few years ago, we'd have it way up here in the top, so what's gonna happen with water? Can we touch on that a little bit? Do you got any ideas there?
Well, I know there's a group out there of, of fishermen and also interested, anyone interested in healthy water to create a better program to control aquatic nuisance species. And, you know, they're, of course, would be putting together a program with being a fish and trying to figure out where to get the money to fund that because they're, you know, they're looking at trying to do things like Minnesota and Montana have been doing for a while and it's not cheap. They first thought that maybe increasing the gas tax a little bit, half a percent or half a cent or whatever, and having that money, you would've funded it, but I, I didn't think that would be a very good option. I didn't think it would make it. No one wants to increase the gas tax even when gas is low. You know, there's just always resistance for that type. You know, there's just always resistance for that type of thing. So then another group came along and they wanted to have watercraft over certain sides like sixteen feet large or be titled in the state of North Dakota. Because of some of the, well, you talked about some theft issues and problems with grain selling and same kind of thing can happen with watercraft. And every other state around us titles their watercraft, so if I had a a boat and I went to Montana or or to Minnesota to sell it or trade it, they'd be able to track that title and see if it was quick or if that was a stolen watercraft. You can't do that in state North Dakota because all you do is register your boat with the game and fish and that doesn't really show anything. So one of the options would be to put those two ideas together and use a title fee on those larger watercraft to pay the cost of aquatic nuisance species. And, you know, so we'll see where that goes. I think Lance Evey, remember him, he used to be in the governor's office. He's a lobbyist now in farms over in Minnesota, but he's a lobbyist that's kind of putting that together for the sports fishermen's Congress. So we'll see where all that goes. And of course, we'll be having our May meeting with with the governor and the water commission on you know, what about Devil's Lake, you know? Because now we're getting down to that point where where we thought we might be two years ago, where the lake out of fourteen forty-eight, going out. Now it's getting there and depending on what the winter does, you know, maybe that'll be a reality at that point, but that's always an interesting meeting. Jeff is always there. I can't remember if any of you guys have been there before or not, but there's a lot of special interests, like people from Minnesota and people from Manitoba and people from Ardo and Grantford, you know, upstream and or downstream. And so there everybody has their own little idea of where this lake should be. And then there's a group that would like to get water, like do an stabilizing water. And Jeff knows all about that.
What was the water board was asking us at our last meeting, Jeff, about? What, why don't you go into that a little bit?
To take off the designation of state waters certificates for any new drains in the Devil's Lake Basin. We had that conversation and maybe, excuse me, Mr. Chairman, but Judge, would you like to? Get out a few minutes, are you sure?
No.
Because we can, we can sort of.
There's a couple of sheets for you.
Thank you, Judge. So back in ninety-five, that engineer, David Spritznatic, sent a letter to the head of the Ramsey County Water Resource Board, who was the president. And the letter basically said, no drains will be permitted in the Devil's Lake Basin. More basically a moratorium on. So without being able to do any projects larger than eighty acres to ask for their their permission permitting a new project, it ties the hands of of water boards, whether it be multi-jurisdictional, cross county lines, or within individual counties, to come up and and with a conceptual plan for a large-scale project to move water, convey water from point A to point B, knowing full well that why spend the time if you're not gonna get approved anymore? And the the water commission, to their credit, have been very consistent in denying any of those permits coming to their office, large or small. So we we asked, brought it up for discussion at our December meeting in Bismarck with in attendance, the state engineer Garland Early, and he said, you know, as long as we're pumping water off, spending close to five hundred thousand dollars a month pumping water out of the lake, we will not permit any new drains within the Devil's Lake Basin. So I suppose until we reach that point of forty-six on the east, forty-five on the west, where the pumps cannot pump any longer, that's the bottom of their intakes, then we, that statewide certificate will probably come off then, maybe. So whether or not we continue with that discussion, asking for that permission to to do that, I'm not sure. That that was the answer that I expected. As long as the state continues to pay that monthly electrical bill every time they flip the switch for the pumps, you know, they're not gonna go ahead and allow any new water from the drain in there, so. But like we mentioned before, it made a significant difference on, you know, the wrong fensters blew with the Ramsey four, makes a big difference on there with some of the townships and private driveways in that area, allowing some of that water to come off, you know, there. Turn in the land that's that did the project. So and there's certainly benefits to it, and I know Nelson County's going through some problems over there with the projects that they have going on with Nelson County twenty-two and some of the maintenance projects that we require as that water continues to go down to further move that water off that ramp. But, you know, so that's kind of the answer that we got there. And I'll show.
Paul, did something add?
I guess when we looked at that, that was really version project a few years ago for the water board, we kind of asked the question if if you could assess, use part of the assessment from the drainage district or everything except to do a project like that, if some of that could go to offset those pumping costs. So basically, the people that benefit, their benefit would pay for the pumping. Has that been brought up yet?
That has not, but but there there again would be a good idea, you know, is to assess people, not only the beneficiaries of that project, but anybody maybe that's beneficiary of the outlets. Put an assessment on for the operation of, you know, I don't know if that, the states that are willing to continue to operate those and pay for those, the operation costs of those pumps, whether or not that continues, we'll we'll see next spring. A lot of, a lot of what happens next spring is then being determined upon how much runoff we get, obviously. You know, there's a considerable amount of effort based in storage that was created over the past couple of years. But so it would take a significant snowfall in order to have a significant runoff where we'd go north of that forty-eight again significantly to crank the pumps up and turn them on and leave them on kind of thing like we did. Pretty much last year, the west end operated a majority of last year, east end was was still out and down, but it operated, you know, it was off for, I don't know, two weeks in in August for some erosion repair on the outfall structure, but other than that, they they operated for their duration of their season. They didn't get a whole lot off well, I shouldn't say that, a hundred and eighteen thousand acre acres is approximately what they got off this year, which is more than what flowed in, so.
I guess the biggest thing is more draining on any projects they can do in up the basin, you know, the whole, the whole basin, I guess, as far as there actually, the water is landlocked, you know, it went in there one, wet years and now it's sitting there and with minimal effect, they could take the water and put it in the lake, you know, and it would open up a lot of property for people to farm or pasture or whatever, but with this moratorium on no draining there, no projects within that whole Devil's Lake Basin, I mean, that's that's pretty broad. You know, I, that's something I think needs to be addressed. I don't know exactly how the legislators would address that, but like Jeff says, when you go to the state water commission, they just get snowballed and said, get the hell out of here, you know, pretty much. I mean, that's, that's probably not right, you know, like I say, there's a lot of that water that's gotten landlocked and and it's landing there and it just needs to go down and needs to be put somewhere.
And with that, I mean, the eastern third of the state was flown with my art contours for the whole area with the International Institute for the irrigation mapping, it was just did that about ten years ago. So that's, any of those quantities would be measurable. I mean, you could, if you're gonna just pay the offset the cost of that pumping that back in, the pumping out of the outlets, you can measure and calculate what it would take, as long as it was a one-time thing, you know, if it was a pump it out. You know, if it's a permanent drain, you'd have, you'd have to have some sort of aging station, but if you're just trying to take water off of an area, it shouldn't be anymore with the pump, you'd be able to measure that pretty easily.
You probably mind these legislation, but?
Maybe, you know, it, instead of just having a, an idea in your head and saying, oh yeah, that'd probably be a pretty good idea if we could move that water from here to there and and alleviate some of these problems that we're having, knowing full well that you don't want to even get a pen on the paper because it's a, you know, it's gonna be denied, so you don't put the effort forth. Although, you know, we have gone to the state water commission, I think, a couple of different times on moving water. And they they were cordial and they looked at the maps and, you know, Ramsey County Water Board and the engineering staff that that Paul and the rest of K O J had done is, no, they did their due diligence and come up with some, you know, pretty reasonable plan and presented it. They listened and that was about the extent of it, wasn't it?
Well, the real black ingredient to it, that one, was the, was the water quality.
Yep.
That we revealed. Dr. did a couple of sloughs, all the contours and those, the water in those was great, so.
We 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 thought that the the water would enhance and freshen the quality of stump lake, but they were worse water quality-wise than stump lake was. So, you know, good idea, good theory, but when rubber made the road, it was, yeah, we don't want any worse water that's in there, but, you know, it it's worse one time, you know? Once it flows through and and continues flowing, then it becomes a fragile body of water. That's been the the whole premise behind moving water off the stump lake, you know, you only get the bad water once.
But one elevation, that was all one lake.
Yep.
So, you know, even to assess these areas to move that water into the main lake, you know, are you already gonna get inside of that too?
Well, absolutely.
Just keep it coming down and if this cycle turns around again, we just have a much more older area.
But, you know, I I I think develop these plans now and remember them, put them on the back drying board for when it is dry. Because that's when water projects need to get accomplished, is when we're dry and and, you know, we tend to forget about it until it's an emergency again. But if we, you know, start going down the opposite way that we were for the past twenty-five years and we become drier and then we get that moratorium lifted, we could have these projects developed, because it'll take twenty-five years before a project gets completed. You know, you look at Michigan spillway, perfect example of that. It took twenty-five years from conceptual design, engineering, funding, permitting, before water moved. So with water projects, take a generation to, from idea to completion. So, and I guess if if anything I could preach to you guys about when they, there's carryover, significant carryover in the Water Resources Trust Fund, I think that's part of the reason why. So they they do take a long time, even though once they get permitted and funded, they still take a long time to complete, so.
I think we need to address our problems here in our own area, our own eight county area, you know? I wish the state water commission would give us the ability to do that instead of just giving us a call.
Because because there are.
Where we gotta go to get an answer.
There are several mini devil's lakes within our basin that flow together, create a, from a puddle to a big, big lake. And they have seven, eight, nine feet to go before they spill over naturally and kind of thing, grass and isle, I'm like, perfect example of that over in Pearson, Rollout County. You know, two lakes that normally weren't very big, but they blew up when the wet cycle came and gobbled up a whole bunch of private property, but they still had another eight feet to go before they reached their outlet elevation to hurricane. And then they all would have come down to Devil's Lake eventually, but they sat in a little closed basin and just destroyed roads after an acre after acre, so. Now, several of our little devil's lakes within our own basin.
Going in the lower east holding areas like there'd be a problem with fish and wildlife and stuff like that to them, or what?
Some of them, you know, like Hovey Slough over in Nelson County, Nelson Walsh County over here. We've had tours over there and and how to get that area drained, because there are apparently two drains on that that slough. One goes to the southeast, which is a little higher, it could be cleaned out, but it has gone to the southwest and the landowners to the southeast don't want it, but it's all W P A. But the fish and wildlife said, yeah, you could take two feet off here or three feet off here. And but it's the arguments amongst the the landowners that were becoming a problem, so. Sometimes working with fish and wildlife, even though they've been a thorn in our sides in some of our wetland areas, they're willing to work with us, you know, they're willing to work with landowners reasonably to a, to an extent that's allowable under their federal regulations. You know, they understand that these places are bigger than what they had that easement for, you know, that was signed sixty years ago. But certainly, and certainly some of them are. But I think we can still continue to work on that and
Yep.
come up with.
You think we're gonna do it somewhere with the state water commission?
Well, you know, that that's where where it starts, you know, I'd hate to go around the and pull an end around on them and, you know, they they never liked that, but all it was, was a sign of a letter stating from the state engineer's office stating that there's a moratorium on any new drains in the Devil's Lake Basin. Now, that's that's permitted drains, you know, it doesn't, you know, the water boards and the water commission are not responsible for drains under eighty acres. You know, a landowner can still do that on their own without coming in and getting it permitted, as long as they're staying within, you know, whatever federal regulations and swamp buster stuff that, you know, that eighty acre thing is a big threshold.
Well, we'll keep you informed and we'll see where it goes. Maybe ask for some El Dorado. One thing we should probably address is law enforcement. As long as you got Rob here, I think he's got some very decent news to share with us, so, you know, go ahead, Rob.
So late yesterday afternoon, I received an email from Mr. Worlinger at the DOCR with our inspection report from the inspection we had on November twentieth. And on the report, they have us compliant for one hundred and three standards and five standards were not applicable, so we got full compliance on our inspection report. I wanted to go through it yet today. I got through it just before I came down here. There are a couple of things I'm gonna send back to them on the report as far as just some inaccuracies with some of the stuff that they had in there pertaining to the facility and whatnot. But I would expect that they'll be releasing an official version of it by the end of the week.
Any other thoughts on what you want to talk to the legislators about law enforcement or?
Well, I mean, for us specifically, you know, we're working on the justice reinvestment aspect of things. We're trying to provide alternatives to incarceration. The biggest issue we run into, especially here locally, is the lack of services. You know, the human service center, we've been working closely with them to try and get them more involved. You know, I understand they have limited resources as well, but they're pretty much hands-off when it comes to our population until they're released. hands-off when it comes to our population until their release. We don't have the ability to provide any services within our facilities, not only because the labor is hard to find, it's expensive, but we just don't have the funding to be able to support something like that ourselves. You know, we're, later on, when we get to the main portion of the meeting, Rhonda and I will over some of the stats that we've collected since we started doing these screenings through this S S P R. And, you know, most, the majority of the people we're screening are coming in with multiple positive results for depression, anxiety, alcohol abuse, drug abuse. And we're recognizing these issues, we're just not able to provide any services to them. So, for me, that's one of the biggest things that we're running into, and it's been a problem for a while. Another issue is gonna be the, the mental health. You know, we're, we're starting to kind of dig our heels into the ground to where we're starting to refuse taking some of the detoxes that PD is trying to bring us or some of the mental health holds because they don't belong in jail. You know, we don't have the medical staff on hand twenty-four-seven to treat these individuals. We don't have the mental, you know, my staff's not trained to properly assess these individuals. And then, I get it too though, because now PD, if we don't take them, what are they supposed to do with them? You know, the hospital, they don't want them because they don't have the resources to take them. So, it's a, it's a huge problem for our, our region. I've had many conversations with the sheriff, the chief, and, you know, we're, we're trying to have conversations with the hospital because everyone needs to be sitting at the table. It's just been very difficult to get anyone to do anything other than recognize there's an issue.
Yeah, it's, it's a problem. I mean, there's really no help at all.
I, you know, just this last weekend, we refused one that they wanted to bring in, you know, that she, she wasn't even able to lock the hospital and said, yep, she's medically cleared to go to the jail. You know, we got Doc Downs on the phone, got her involved, she's like, yeah, there's no way. They're able to take her back up and put her on an extended E R up at the hospital. We had one today that, one of the residents from reentry was, had abused some over-the-counter cold medications, was out of it, you know, so we hadn't taken up the hospital and we were gonna, before we were gonna take him to the jail, well, he's in Grand Forks at the hospital now. So, it's, it's a problem.
Explain to me and the rest of us, what are the governors trying to do with James Stowe? You're gonna add a facility, right? It's gonna be a minimum security? Is that gonna be a mental minimum security? Is that kind of the plan, or what is it? Rhonda, would you know?
I don't know, I don't know if Rob does. My idea is that the ultimate goal would be to treat people in their community and that not hold people that have low-level crimes related to addiction in the same facilities as very violent offenders is what I think it is. You know, when you look at the report that was issued from the Justice Reinvestment Act, that's some of the things that we don't do very well in North Dakota, serve people in their communities, so that, I'm only making a guess.
You guys haven't heard much about that?
No.
I know over there in the governor's-
Just as a drop down day is all I, all I did know about it, and I was talking a little bit about New England, you know, I was-
Yeah. Yeah, I don't understand that one either, but-
And, you know, I've, I've been really active here locally with, you know, with what Rhonda has as well, with our, we, we kind of term ourselves Lake Region Recovery Efforts now, you know, trying to help build, use what we do have for resources in the community to build a support system for those people who are recovering from addiction or mental health. Trying to get more of a peer support base because that's really the tool and resource we have available to us. So, I, you know, the peer support aspect of the Free Through Recovery Program and expanding that program beyond the, the individuals that are coming out of prison and trying to catch them early and preventing them from getting into that cycle. You know, I know that I saw a red somewhere where they're, they're looking to expand that program in that way, and I think that that's the, the direction it needs to go. If not dealing, you know, it, it needs to be there for the individuals coming out of prison to help them reintegrate, but it also needs to be there to prevent people from getting to that point. And that's what we've really identified locally that we need to do. And so, that's kind of where we're starting to steer meetings that we've been having is to try, how can we utilize what we've got locally to prevent and interact with these individuals right off, off the bat? And I know the courts are, you know, our judges here are awesome, you know, they're big advocates for that as well, and anything we do get set up, I know they'll utilize.
Well, you've covered a lot of subjects. Any other questions from the commissioners?
Anything that you've heard, Dennis, from the corn or soybean growers on the prevention or the, of Palmer control of, at Palmer Amaranth? Because that's gonna, you know, seeing those estimates of yield reduction in, in corn and soybeans of seventy to ninety percent, you know, prices for those commodities are one up and you take that away, or at a hundred and fifty dollars an acre for herbicide to control it.
No, I'm glad to bring that up, yeah, because that's something that should probably be talked about if we go in here before the commodity, before it's under, when those folks are all there, so something should be talked about.
Yeah. And, you know, and I don't know if you've talked to Mr. Otis about that, but the discovery over in Vence County was along the rail line next to the elevators, and so what they're thinking that it was coming on a rail car. And so, inspections of rail cars or, I don't know, how do you go about further preventing that there or slowing the progression of that, that weed, but it's similar to A N S. You know, it's one of those problems that once it's here, it's, it, it just makes your stomachs turn, you know, kind of thing. Scary kind of, I don't know, boogeyman, nightmarish kind of things that you lose sleep over. You know, very concerning and it should be for the corn growers and soybean associations, I would think, you know, as well as the other growers who live in the state, but those two crops, I think it hits pretty darn hard. A N S, I was on that, that state, A N S committee that, that developed that new aquatic nuisance management plan that we, we just completed in November, submitted it to the governor for his approval, signature. Where you're, you're getting the, the, the stuff from the sports fishing Congress is where we felt from Devil's Lake standpoint and those around Lake Seco, we're the ones that made the most noise on that committee about that. The plan does not go far enough. There needs to be more either enforcement or skip or fines where those caught bringing it, those that don't follow the clean drain, dry rules that they currently have with, with boats and other aquatic vehicles. But zebra mussel for Devil's Lake is, is about as scary as going dry. You know, it's, it's up in Lake Winnipeg now and talking to those anglers up there and those resort owners, it's hit their economy pretty hard. Lake Malax in Minnesota, you know, I always go back to that one because it's about the same size as Devil's Lake, but it has a bigger resort community. Well, it, it's better developed. It's one of those lakes in Minnesota that's stabilized, so you can develop right up to the shore of it without worrying about that, about flooding, so they have a lot of hotels, resorts around that, that lake. But they have zero walleye catching on that lake. They, they're banned catching walleye on that lake because of, you know, zebra mussel had a, a major influence on that. And so, when you look at what that's done to communities like that, if it were to be introduced into Devil's Lake, it could be scary bad. So, whatever you can do to enhance those efforts of game and fish, that would be really appreciated. Whether it be, you know, further regulations or further any enhancement, you know, you go west of here into Montana, Idaho, Colorado, and they stop you at the border with a boat to, and go through a boat inspection. I, I think that would be difficult, if not impossible, to do. But, you know, we, we seem to, to do a lot of D U I enforcement, whether it be through the checkpoints. Well, when we brought up for game and fish, they said that would be a, a very poor way of doing it. I'm like, well, if it was a poor way of, of educating people on the dangers of, I don't think the state would continue to do their D U I enforcement campaigns at their checkpoints. So, you know, I think, you know, checkpoints before you get to major waterways would be, you know, something that could be looked at. But like I said, it, zebra mussel scares the heck out of me. Lake Michigan, we now know how big Lake Michigan can possibly be, they're infected with zebra mussels and their bigger cousin, the aquatic mussel, which survives in deeper waters. They're, that lake is completely covered and every four days, that water is circulating. Every four days, they have enough mussels through there, and that's what mussels do is they, they're a filter feeder, so they circulate water and, and that's how they get their nutrients. But every four days, the water in Lake Michigan is recirculating. That's a, it's just mind-boggling, the, the amount of mussels that that would take to do it. So, any help and support, then I'd be happy to come down and, you know, you tell the fire provider for anything or whatever you guys would need, so. We're glad that we'll-
Jay?
-get you going on, on water.
Well, I think we'll, uh-
Turn it down.
Thank you, Jalen.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Did you get your sponsors on, or Dragon?
Snake, Snake and Dragon, we did get, I, I'm not sure if they've got sponsors for that, but it's one of the things that the Association of Counties brought up and will support.
Don't you go, Ken.
It, it should be fine. Snake and, 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 the cost share for that was taken out in twenty-seventeen legislation, and so we're looking at getting that restored through a, a state water commission cost share policy. The economic analysis was removed, we were asked to take that out. How, somehow funny how legislation goes, you know, where we'll support this, maybe we're not gonna support that, so take that off and we'll support everything else kind of thing. And how it was done, I'm not, wasn't privy to that information, I was just told, and after our meeting on, our first meeting in December, that down to this market, it was that, oh, by the way, that bill's, we're gonna take, take that out. We're, we're not gonna support that. So, but even Mr. Trainor down at, at the association thought it was a, a good bill and was willing to switch his net card on that one. Well, thank you again.
Thank you, guys.
Thanks for having us.
Good luck.
I gotta go rest up for the school board and all.
Take care of it.
Did you guys get that information? I'm sure you did. Priorities and stuff.
It's a big break.
Five minutes.
Five minutes.
Well, we'll call the meeting back to order. Approval of minutes, the next thing on the agenda. You have a motion? Motion of second, any other questions? All favors say aye.
Aye.
Your end, Bill. Candy, any surprises here?
No, there's an additional list under desk that came in.
Most of you approved. Most of you approved, Dave, your second?
Sir.
Second, any other questions? Everything's all right, you think, Andy?
Yep. We don't have everybody to stop spending money.
Who called?
Wakefield.
Aye.
Britt.
Aye.
Holson.
Aye.
Lifon.
Aye.
Brown.
Aye. Approval of agenda, any changes, anything you wanna add? Most of you approved, we have second? All favors say aye.
Aye.
All, all, most of you carries. Jared Toldman of the Public Library.
Well, thank you for, uh, it didn't need some time to be able to come meet with you. So, Luke Swakefield is actually our president of the Lake Region Public Library's Board, and he's asked to each time I meet with you guys to share with you some of our statistics of what we're doing over at the library. So, for the nun, the month of November, our adult circulation was up thirty-one percent from last year. Our juvenile circulation was up twenty-four percent from last year, and our ebook circulation was up forty-eight percent from last year. We roughly see about a hundred and thirty people every day come through the Lake Region Public Library. So, we're, we're pretty busy and our numbers are doing excellent this year. The reason I'm here is we are proposing to purchase a digital scanner for the library. We're doing this in partnership with the Lake, or the Heritage Center here in town, and the goal is to begin to start preserving our historical books and documents there with the Heritage Center. And so, the goal is to be able to take these historical books, scan them, then in the library's catalog, have the Heritage Center be a second location for where these materials are housed. So, if you went onto the library's catalog and searched for a book that happened to be at the Heritage Center, it would tell you that that book is located at the Heritage Center instead of the, the library. So, we're looking for approval to make that a second location in our catalog. As that process goes on, the book will be digitized and then you'd be able to go into our server and locate that book. If it's a fragile book that we don't want, lots of patrons moving through, they would be able to see the images and actually go through the book and see what's in it. So, we're looking at that, for that approval, doing that second location. Are there any questions?
What kind of scanner, you getting one of those big bed ones?
Yeah, it's kind of, the control sits above where you would lay the book and then it takes photos of each page and you turn it. The other aspect of this, we're trying to preserve our heritage as well as look to the future, and so for the schools here in the Lake Region area as well as college, we offer it to students who could then come in and say they've been assigned a few chapters and they don't have enough time to read through all of it. They could scan those chapters and then turn those chapters into an audible thing that they could actually listen to. So, we're trying to also help our, our students here in the area as well, so looking to the past as well as the future for it.
And just, just to add, the only reason that I asked that Jared come before both the city and this body is because seeing as, as, you know, we're financing that, I wanted to make sure that everybody was aware. This should not cost any extra money to the library, apart from the one-time purchase of the scanner, though, it would be good to have it for the library alone, but we felt that it was just a very nice synergy. And in addition to that, we're going to see if the Heritage Center is willing to become a part of the cost of buying the scanner. So, I, but I, but I wanted to make sure that everybody was, you know, aware of what we were thinking about doing and why we thought it was a good idea.
We, we, we're, we'll do about two-thirds of the cost of it, and then Heritage Center heads it, they will cover the remaining, and so we're just looking to get approval before we go ahead and purchase it. The last thing I would mention about it was, and it's at least gave my mind as you're talking some-
What's the cost of it?
Um, so it's five thousand six hundred and eighty dollars for the scanner. Oh, and that was the other thing. So, as patrons come into the library, they can also utilize it. So, say they have a family book of heritage, they could put that down and digitize it, they could use it if you put down, say, five photos into, instead of taking this one scan that has the five photos in the one scan, it actually can separate into five different scans, so you could work it for scrapbooking, different projects of preserving digital photos of your precious ones. So, I think it'd be something that the community would really like to utilize.
Would have a larger format, capabilities?
For like maps and things?
Well, some of those older books are, you know-
Like eleven-by, not eleven-by, thirteen, but like, yeah.
Right, and so you can adjust, I think, the part that you get away from it, and that is the idea. We, as we went through there, and kind of looked at some of those historical documents, they are pretty large, and so we kept that in mind as we were looking for a scanner.
All of you, most of you approve, purchase of, giving me?
Well, that's second, Joe.
And, and does that extend to include that, that we allow for the library to host sort of a, a, the Heritage Center as a secondary location? To me, that's sort of the more questionable question.
All right.
Well, thank you.
Motion of second, any other discussion, questions? I don't know what you, who called, or not.
Okay. Thank you for your time.
Thank you so much. All favors say aye.
Aye.
All, most of you carries. Crystal?
Okay, so we have the emergency closure policy, and this kind of came up with Kristen and then Candy with their concerns about how we go about doing it currently is, I think they worked it out with the chair and then between them two, whether we delay it or close or, you know, due to weather. And so, to have a little bit consistency and stuff, it kind of came up with the idea of to follow- And so to have a little bit consistency and stuff, it kind of came up with the idea of to follow the Devil's Lake Public School system just on delays and closures for the day. And then any other type of call, the emergency closures, of course, would go through the chair to be the decider. So that's kind of the proposal in there, or the proposed changes. And then down towards the bottom, the other big changes, of course, anybody that has to work, why would we have a delay or a closure? That would be like Kevin's department or the sheriff's department. They would get some compensation that would go into their vacation balance so we can make things fair because they would have to be at work. And then you have other county employees that are getting time off, so. So then are the main things in that policy change.
Okay.
Any questions or comments or thoughts?
Do you need approval on this or not?
On the, yeah, for this policy change, yeah.
Any comments from the commission, what you have talked about? Is everybody all right with it?
Is it going to cause any kind of paper trail headaches for you guys to keep track and add the vacation? Because to me, that's a perfectly reasonable thing to do. I just want to make sure it's not going to cause you guys any trouble this year.
No, it seemed pretty fair.
This is, this is something that went through the department head meeting.
So we didn't have a department head meeting, but I did email and I'll call the department heads to get their input on it. We got input back on it.
What hap- what happens if Lakota closes their school and we don't?
Sure.
Does that employee require them to work?
So we kind of visited about that and that's why we put the Devil's Lake Public School system in there because it's their choice to live that far out as an employee. So we kind of discussed, like, you know, you have Kristen that lives way out and, I mean, where do you kind of draw the line of what schools you're going to follow or what delays or?
And just like in the past too, like if something happened and we school was closed and I'm not able to get to work right away at eight AM, let's say the road is closed or the weather is bad and I come in at ten AM, I would use those two hours as my annual leave.
And then that's stated in that last paragraph there that if somebody can't, you have to contact the supervisor and they take it.
Okay, I feel like you got everything covered today.
Was there any consideration for road, no travel advised? You know, Steve loves that way, no travel advised when people are out driving around.
It's like the instant call for everybody to come out and check it out. It's not that bad.
We're going to follow the school district, I mean, we're pretty safe there, aren't we?
They follow, they follow that as well. If there's no travel advised, road's closed until the DOT opens it.
Is that right, Kevin?
Oh, yeah, and they're, they're safe about it.
Yeah, that's kind of what, my question didn't belong on the same lines, is it? I mean, I don't know exactly what their policy is for closing, but if it's, that's always been my thought, if no travel was advised, then why do we want to have additional people on?
So and I did get a copy of their policy from this school and it just pretty much states that the superintendent works with their bus superintendent to, you know, in regards to what their decisions are.
Any other questions?
Make sure that the NICSOL update their information gets for new employees and employees in the locker. So it's in exchange between the two of you and then it gets forwarded to start.
It is actually, I'm the one that inputs all the information into the system. And then in the event of a late opening, delayed opening or closure, I will push out a NICSOL message out and call out for everybody so they have notification. And then of course I'll be in touch with Candy so we can put it on the radio as well.
But if there's a disconnect between an employee being hired, you getting that information, then obviously that person's not going to get that information.
There's a form actually in the auditor's office with all new hires and then it gets me that information as well.
And make sure you take the retired people out. Because nobody wants a text message at like six thirty in the morning.
They do not. Correct.
Why not? We get it at four thirty.
I'll make a motion to approve the policy change.
Okay, we have motion to approve the policy changes. You have a second?
I'll second that.
You have a second? Any other questions on it, comments? All favors say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Contract with Cavalier County being on net. Crystal, we pretty clear here or what?
As long as you guys are.
I think everybody's aware of it here, the commission, right? What we're doing there, they want to use Crystal for a day and a half, is that what it is?
Yeah.
So then they're going to run it through Ramsey County to pay, similar to what we do with the Vets Office.
So they'll send, they'll send us a check in the status of her pay on the start.
That's all right.
Okay, we'll send them a bill and then they'll send us a check.
Fine, I hear you.
The only thing from Cavalier County is they'd like to have that either party can terminate the contract with a thirty day notice. That's not anywhere on here.
Are you okay with that addition?
Yeah, that's how we handle would be that so I wanted to move that to the American. It's got a, it's got a cancellation portion of it, yeah.
Yeah, that's fine, should be in there.
Just period drop it this one for us, so.
My only question would be from the, the budget aspect of it, since we're going above a certain dollar limit now and it's cool, how does that change benefits and all that kind of stuff?
Well, for the benefits, it would just be the retire or.
It would just be the retirement, because healthcare doesn't count. So it's just, it's just cooling the retirement benefits. Okay, I just wanted to make sure we had money in that, you know, the budget for certain numbers, so.
Well, I've moved to approve, including the changes that Cavalier wanted to make about a contract termination.
Okay, motion that affects your second.
Second.
You have a second, any other discussion, questions? All favors say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Crystal. Kristen?
Yes, hi, I just want to let you guys know, we are meeting again in the Sireado Committee on Friday morning to discuss some of the issues that we've been having with the panic button system. We are, we've contacted Lakeside Lock and Key and formulated a plan to be able to lock the front doors in the event of a panic button emergency. That way it will lock out anybody else from coming in to potential threats, harm or situation. We would like to move forward on that as well. It's a pretty nominal fee, cost wise, to be able to have a system in place to lock that front door versus me coming upstairs and locking the front door on my own. That way protocol can be followed by everybody, including myself, by locking themselves in their office until the off their message has been given by the law enforcement center. It'll be under that thousand dollar mark, probably around four or five hundred dollars. I know Rhonda had called and talked to Craig over at Lakeside Lock and Key last week and discussed that and we'll discuss it further at our meeting Friday morning. And we, as a committee, would like to discuss Friday morning as well and decide the best office location within the courthouse to be able to have that system set up for that button to be engaged or that system to be utilized to be able to lock that front door.
Yeah, have you signed it down yet?
We will Friday, if, yeah, as a committee, we will Friday.
So it's, it's a situation where we go into lockdown, a button gets pressed, you get the reverse nine one one and then at that point, somebody's going to have to manually press the button to shut those doors off then.
To lock the door, correct.
So there's going to be a little bit of a.
It'll be a bit of a delay.
There'll be a delay in there.
But, but as, right, as of right now, that is our best course of action. I've been in communication with the telephone company as well where our direct system is through. And there isn't a system that they have to come up with to, to function and utilize with our current system in place where when a button is pressed, it automatically locks right away. They said they were looking into that. I haven't heard if they've come up with anything as a solution. And Lakeside Lock and Key was the one that originally did all the fobs with the other doors. So it would make sense to go that route for now.
Is, do we have a monitor or some way in the courthouse so when a button's pressed, one of the sense phones like tells in the courthouse or we don't know something's pressed until we get that reverse nine one one?
Um, the, when a button is engaged, the sense phone, it's, it's, it's like a short circuit, it's like a disconnect and it'll, the sense phone is wired to a side of the floor, not an office directly per se. We don't have enough sense phones in place where it tells you what office. It just gives you a side of the floor, whether it's the north side, the south side, in basin for a second, third. And that's how it goes.
Well, yeah, but I'm just saying, so, so say first floor, north wing or something like that, a button gets pressed. Do we have like something in the courthouse that the minute that button's pressed, a monitor or something tells you a button has been pressed or we don't know something's been pressed until we get that reverse nine one one?
Sorry, correct, till, till the nine one one, reverse nine one one.
So there would be no way for us to know a button was pressed till we get the reverse nine one one anyways. So the quickest we could get the door closed was get the reverse, manually press the button and lock the door.
Yes, sorry, correct.
Well, it sounds to me like that's going to, we're going to be able to do it wrong.
Until something else is.
Until there's an automatic system that works inside of it or something.
So that's where we are right now with all of it. I just wanted to inform you and let you know.
Sounds good, thank you.
Thank you.
Steve, roll.
Hello? I'm here, I guess to request that remote monitoring and maintenance software prices increase incrementally. And, yes, it was approved at a certain dollar amount in May and it's gone up ten dollars or one dollar per computer.
So this is a no choice increase, huh?
Basically.
When do you think our next increase is coming?
Probably twenty twenty.
Do you think they'll hold off that long?
I, yeah, I've got a quote for this year for this price. Coming here.
We don't need to act on this or?
I guess, well, it was put in.
We're going to get the bill anyway.
Yeah, we have it put in minutes, we just approved the increase, so ten dollars a month and a dollar a month per computer. I'll make a motion to approve the, the new.
Okay, raise a motion, that effect, is there a second?
Second.
You have a second, any other discussion? All favors say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Nothing else here? No, thank you. Steve Nelson, you going to buy a vehicle?
Two.
Two, I'm a little two.
So I got bids from Ford and Chevy for each place. I own a SUV type vehicle and a special service pickup. So I got one from Ford and one from Chevy, or one from Dodge. Chevy's vehicles are way out of our range. They're, they're up in the, they start at thirty-five grand for their full-size top end type vehicle. I don't think we need to go there. So I'd like to like the Durangle, the Durangle and Explorer were the two SUVs I got bids for. And then an F-150 and a Ram pickup for the other two. The SUVs were higher than both the pickups. The Ford pickup was, I think, was that, how much you like, twenty-nine nine ninety-nine for the Ford? And twenty-eight eight four E eight for the Dodge Ram, sixty-eight. So a little bid, of course, would be the Dodge pickup, twenty-eight eight, which is about the same price as last year, pretty close, within a few dollars.
Is that the pickup you have now?
We have, we have two of them, but.
Dodges.
Two Dodge, yeah, they don't, the Dodge people in the room will say, it doesn't say Dodge anywhere on there, it says Ram. Yeah, we have two of them already. The two we have, the guy's home, we're getting eighteen to nineteen miles per gallon. So there's no significant difference between the SUV and the, and the pickup, which is kind of one of my concerns about budgeting. So we average about twenty with the Explorer and the Durangle. So I was concerned going to full-size pickup, we might go down to that fourteen, fifteen, sixteen.
But you know.
We're eighteen, seventeen, eighteen, nineteen on the app depending on the month. So we're actually doing pretty well.
You've got enough power with that?
Yeah, they got the V eight in them and then they got these controls that, like if you're just cruising down, like if we're on a trip to wherever or taking up prisoners, it shuts four cylinders off. So your gas lines will know, which you don't have with that D-six, but.
Where's that at with the Ford?
Where's the Ford at for, for gas pump? Because I mean, they're close.
I have no idea. I don't know, and nobody has any? Nobody, I don't know. I have no idea.
That's the newer EcoBoost that's just.
No, I have no, and, you know, of course they say.
Saying, saying.
I had a, I had a three-six EcoBoost personally and they said I was going to get twenty and I was, I never got over fourteen.
Yeah.
So I, I have no clue what their, what that pickup would have. And they actually offer a police package pickup, but that was thirty-six thousand dollars that we. So I didn't even bid that one. I bid the regular special duty. Because I don't think we need to.
So what are we replacing then, two SUVs?
Our oldest, yeah, our two oldest SUVs, which would be the ones that are starting to get to the end of life. They're getting close to that a hundred and forty, a hundred and thirty thousand mile mark. We're trying to get rid of them before we have a lot of maintenance on them. So.
In your opinion, I guess, you don't care if we do SUVs or pickups, the pickups are just.
No.
Doesn't matter.
I wanted to try it last year and it's working out. It doesn't seem to make a huge bit of difference. We have to, we have to put running boards on them because of the step to get people in and out of the back.
It depends on you.
That's not an easy job, it's a tall.
Well, especially when you got your legs chained together, you know, that's usually getting in the back.
Legs aren't changed.
Makes it a tough step up there, but anyway. I mean, we've gotten good bids from our local guys and we've, I gotta put on the other ones for a reasonable amount. They're taking good care of, so I mean, it's, it's not that big of a.
So you want two pickups?
I would, I think we should go with a little bit and get the two pickups again.
So move.
Second. Okay, we got a motion and a second. But you came in the room and you wanted one pickup and one SUV, now you want two pickups?
No, I've always wanted two of the same.
You just bid on it.
I just said I bid, I wanted you to know I bid, but to see what the prices were.
Thank you.
And all the SUVs were higher than, even most of the pickups.
In case the SUVs came in lower.
Well, and if the SUVs came in lower, we were taking SUVs. That's basically, you know, the bottom line, it doesn't matter.
Thank you for the information, yeah. Resale would be pretty decent. If you have sold one.
We haven't got there yet. We just, you know, we've got about two more, a few more years before we'll figure that out, but.
What do you think, do mine need to be then a hundred?
They should be a little over a hundred by the time we get a hundred and twenty for a four-wheel drive pickup. And these come with the chrome package, so we get the chrome wheels and the chrome, plus they got double side box and he's on the, so resale should be better than our Durangles and our Explorers actually.
They should work pretty good for chasing cows though.
They good.
It sounds like a good service truck.
My God's getting kind of hailed out.
Do I need to swear, do I need to swear at you and make a rap if it's like an issue you want or what?
Got to wait three years.
That'll work, okay, we got that.
So. How long before, I mean, from order to receive?
Well, hopefully we get them in April. That's why I like to order them now.
Really?
Usually I think, last year it took a long, we didn't get our second pickup until almost August. But that was a manifest, that was, that was, no, that was his pickup that got lost. We got one in May and one didn't get here till August, so.
What did you get, Kevin? You got four?
I got one of the service parts.
We're hoping April, May, or actually March, April.
And then you have to go through all the.
Transfer, transfers and all the equipment and that's, we're doing that cargo because that's the most reasonable place. So we take care of that.
We'll take a motion.
All right, yeah.
Do it. Motion in a second, all right. You know, and this, any other questions? Roll call.
Britt?
Aye.
Olson?
Aye.
Wakefield?
Aye.
Lifon?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye. Anything else, Steve?
Oh, sir, thank you.
Have you spent enough money today? Thank you. Roger, how you doing?
All right. What sound panels in the big meeting room, I'm sure you all know, and it turned out real well. So I've got estimates for putting them in a historic room now also. Eighty-four ninety-one sixty total.
What was the other room?
Uh, about eleven, eleven vault floor.
It's a thing to do, huh?
I think so. I think it turned out real well too. And I think it helped us in the historic room a lot.
Have you had meetings in there yet?
In the big meeting room? Not, not a real big meeting, but there's been a few meetings and I think that everybody's liked it, so.
Yeah, staff meeting was really good.
I think it makes a difference.
Oh, I know, you, you walk from the hallway into the meeting room and if you're talking, you can instantly tell the difference, so.
Just that morning, we had breakfast in there.
Yeah.
You could tell because there was people sitting here and there and everyone. You could tell, cause there was people sitting here and there and everywhere, and before you would probably heard a lot of background noise from the conversation and it looked in, it a lot, I thought, so.
I think it was a good investment.
It's good, huh?
I think so, yeah.
I haven't been down very yet, so. Okay.
I'll make a motion.
You got your budget?
Yeah.
This this budget, eighteen.
Um, well, Brett wouldn't, well, actually, yes, you would, but I'm sure this won't probably give what I was thinking.
Did I check eighteen?
We got the budget in eighteen, right, check eighteen.
We'll check eighteen.
I can, I can talk to them tomorrow and see if they can get us a, a.
I'm sure they can.
Yeah. Probably not the, the installation bill, probably not, but we probably gotta go for the actual panels.
We can't write them, we can't write them a check until it's approved. Are we approving the payment of the check due? Cause we won't meet yet.
Did you plan your motion?
I I would make that part of the motion that we do the, at least the, the material portion of.
Sounds good.
In the uh payment for twenty eighteen.
Okay. Do we have a second to that?
Oh, a second, that, that you wanna, you go right ahead.
Okay. Any other questions on that issue? Roll call.
Olson.
All right.
Licon.
Aye.
Wakefield.
Aye.
Brett.
All right.
Brown.
Aye. Anything else, Roger?
Uh, no.
Thank you very much, Rhonda, Rob. Jail screenings.
You wanna start?
Go ahead.
So, hold on, it would have been a two and a half years ago or so, just before I moved into the director position at LEC. I've gotten in touch with Rhonda and we applied for a grant through Heartview Foundation for a screening portal for inmates and residents at the reentry center. Uh, took us a little while to get through the process of getting the grant and getting trained up and getting access to the portal. Uh, but we've been using it for the better part of the last two years now. Uh, and we just kind of wanted to provide an update to the, to the commission as far as some of the things that we've identified with the portal. And we're still trying to utilize a little bit better than what we have been. Um, in the last two years, well, in twenty seventeen, we screened thirty nine individuals. Uh, so we haven't utilized, hadn't utilized it as much as we wanted to at that point. Through twenty eighteen, to date, we've screened a hundred and thirty five. Uh, the majority of those are people that are at the reentry center, cause everyone that is going into the reentry center is now being screened as part of, as part of the intake process. Uh, and I just, last week, met with our case manager over there, who's now gonna start utilizing the results from these screenings to implement them in our case plans with them. To say, okay, you, you know, identify that you've screened high or positive for depression, anxiety, uh, whatever the case may be. And then to try and get them so that they're getting connected or have resources available to get help for those services. Uh, we're just starting to get into that aspect of it, so I'm not sure how well that's gonna work, just because there are limited resources available. Uh, some of the things that I pulled out of those had a hundred and seventy four that we screened, uh, forty seven, forty seven of them tested positive for depression. We had fifty three were positive for anxiety, thirty seven were positive for suicidal ideation. We had a hundred and one positive for alcohol dependence, a hundred and three were positive for prescription drug dependence, a hundred and three were positive for illicit drug dependence. Sixty nine were positive for traumatic brain injury symptoms and fifty four were positive for post-traumatic stress syndrome, uh, symptoms. Uh, out of the hundred and seventy four, twenty two did not screen positive for anything. We had fifteen that screened positive for only one of those listed above, a hundred and thirty seven of them screened for more, for two or more. We wanna try and start getting this done, you know, uh, Rhonda's provided some staff to help us get some of the jail screenings done for people within the jail. Uh, we don't really have the staff within the jail to do these screenings ourselves, so I appreciate that she's thrown us some resources to help out with that. We're gonna try and expand on that and really catch that population a little bit better, because that's where we really need to be getting people, uh, is at that point. We've tried to redo a few referrals to the human service center through this. Uh, when we've had someone that's tested positive, uh, for, or or has symptoms of something, we'll run the screening report, we'll do the release of information, we'll get it over to the human service center. But generally, it's gonna be, okay, you have to tell them to come and see us when they get out. Um, because they don't want to provide services while they're, so. So, I, overall, I think with the, with the tool, um. Not sure that we're pleased with it yet, uh, we haven't gotten the type of interaction and probably feedback and response that we would like from Heartview as far as in the backend of things. Uh, I kind of went in and dug around a little bit myself to be able to pull numbers from it. Um, if they come back wanting more money for a renewal for this service, I don't think we're gonna take that. I think we're gonna probably start exploring other options if that becomes a, a point of contention on their side. You have anything you wanna add?
I was just gonna say, that's what we budgeted for and they did not, I told the board, our social service board last night, that they didn't send us a bill, so we didn't call them and ask them if they wanted money. They haven't been the most supportive as far as tech, tax support. What I would add to that is that Christie Majaka and Amber Dewey have, um, did the bulk of the screening, Christie has just got trained, she's a new child welfare worker. Um, we are gonna train, um, we are gonna hire a person to replace our home community based service, um, worker Bee Howgan, who retired after many years of service. And kind of evidence-based, um, treatment for alcohol and drug addiction, behavioral health issues, uh, long-term chronic mental health issues are that, um. Peers, peer mentors, peer supports and, um, paraprofessionals help you more than going to a professional, so along that vein, we're gonna try to do some things with that new position, with some screening, so we can do it more systematically, not just when we have time. And I think we've been better probably the last four months of getting, being on it and we devised, um, every person that's in the jail leaves with a piece of paper that I screen, you know, you screened positive for this. Um, we talk, talk with them about that, give them, um, a resource booklet that we have in our agency, that this is where you can go for help. We've identified some early intervention folks who have children, who obviously their issues are causing problems with their children because they are child welfare staff. Amber's now moved to home community based services, but it fits there too, because home community based service is about people, keeping people in their home healthy and so it fits there. Um, but yeah, I think that the biggest impact have been, um, the worker, Amber's been surprised that she's had people tell her, I, I never knew I had anxiety, I, I didn't know that. Um, you, you screen high for traumatic brain injuries, well, they're, they've had a lot of traumatic events, car accidents, that impair their, probably impair their judgment. And they've never heard that before or ever been screened for that, so I don't know that we'll know the impact as far as evidence-based collecting data. It's really difficult, cause you don't know what you don't know, um, I suppose we could track people that reoffend, so that's the hard part about it, so what we, it seems somewhat unethical to just say, yeah, you screen high for collecting all this information on you, you screen high for everything and not have anywhere to refer them. Right then, I mean, of course, for suicidal folks, that happens, but, um, that's kind of the frustrating part about not getting a mental health professional from the human service center to come into the jail. And then the stopping point there is, of course, they don't have a billable source, because when, when a, a person is in jail, there's no federal funds for med, medical assistance, no medical, uh, expansion Medicaid. So it's on the county's dime, the, the, the city's dime, or whoever has them incarcerated there. You're an inmate, you're responsible of the incarcerating, uh, municipality or government. So that's the hard part there. I think some other states have looked at that not happening and, um, not so much of, of course, for federal, federal people, never. But that's the way we've written our state plan, I've gotten kind of mixed answers to that question. Every Medicaid state plan is written differently by each state, and so I hope that there's some more looks at that, so. It's just frustrating, cause they, they don't have a billable source, so they're not sending staff over, that's kind of where, I don't know if they say that, but that's, that's what's happened.
Couple of questions. Number one, as part of the screening tool, do we determine if they have insurance when they leave the facility?
No, it's not a part of the screening.
No, no, it's not.
Is there a way we can determine, do we sign people up for Medicaid when they leave?
We do not.
They make referrals, don't ask them to come, they don't, but that's a really, really good.
Well, I'm just looking at it from the aspect of, and and if, if, I mean, I, I, foreign camera, I can see it, but if the state's not gonna help us, we gotta help ourselves. It's just that simple. We have a hundred and seventy four screened and a hundred and thirty something of them are multimodal. Let's hire somebody. And then let's get them on Medicaid, so when they walk out of the facility, we get paid back and we pay for the position. And then let's provide the services, if that's what it takes, because if we invest on the front end or on the back end and make sure that they get services, we don't have to pay for them when they come back again. I'm getting sick of paying the bill. Let's try to solve the problem instead of bashing our head in the wall like we have been for years, and I'm sure Sheriff Nelson wouldn't mind not having to pick people up constantly, if we can maybe make a difference. I'm not saying it's gonna solve the problem, cause obviously it's not going to, but we have to try something else than just put them in the jail.
Well, and that kind of goes into what I was talking about in the legislature for here earlier, is, you know, we're dealing with a lot of mental health hold, we're dealing with a lot of detox cases where we're starting to say, no, we're not taking them, because we don't have anybody that's available to be able to. Watch these people and provide the, the services that they need, you know, we're basically a holding place for them to come in and sleep and and sit in a six by eight, so that they won't hurt themselves or somebody else. They're not getting any services to help them get any better.
Hint to that, and the same thing's happening with children, I know, I've talked to the social service board about that, um, you know, we're, we are having, we're billing other counties six, four to six, I don't know if we've gone up to size eight. Six thousand dollars, because we are housing kids at a tending care that there's nowhere else for them to go. We've had children sitting in the emergency room in, uh, Bismarck, because there's not a bed in a psychiatric facility in the state of North Dakota where he can go. So they're watching him in an emergency room, we, we have a crisis, I know that people are working on it. Um, then when I hear the governor's address and they're shutting down one of the safety nets, which is the Grafton State School for those low cognitive level functioning kids with. Behavioral health issues and have hurt someone, it's like, you know, you just wonder, so I hope there's a bigger plan, I haven't heard it. I think we're gonna hear from a lot of parents at this legislative session who've been there. You know, they, they, if, if you yourself, not on Medicaid, they were not in foster care, if you wanted to get your child into a psychiatric care facility, uh, and, 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 an under twenty year old, you would struggle to find a bed in the state of North Dakota. If you had the best insurance in the world, there just isn't one, you might drive to Minnesota, you might drive to Minneapolis. In fact, we explored that with our kid, can we take him to a behavioral health unit in Minneapolis? Cause we need to get him some services, so. Yeah, I'll, I'll get off the soapbox, but it, it's a huge issue, lack of services is a huge issue.
Okay, is there any counties that are doing what you're talking about, Adam, in North Dakota?
Yeah, I, you're, you're Cas counties, you're Burley counties, you know, the places have the resources.
They're doing that.
Yeah.
They probably.
Burley, Burley County's got a full-time, uh, person, that's all he does is make sure they get connected to services, helps them get set up with Medicaid, I, that's, that's what he does within their jail. You know, Cas County's got a whole wing, or they, I think they have three full-time employees that are dedicated to where they identify people who maybe have a low cash bond and just can't come up with a bond. They're on a B misdemeanor, or they're just on a failure to pay, and they'll get them out into, you know, into the community on GPS monitoring, and they'll make sure that they have connection to services. They'll actually go and provide them rides to get to their appointments, you know, they'll do stuff like that, because they have, they have the resources.
There's a sheriff in, um, South Dakota, and I forget the county, where, I think I sent you the article, where, um, he is just beaming, because they built a mental, uh, a behavioral health, psychiatric wing onto his jail. And people are getting services and it's been needed for a long time, I don't know if I sent that to you or not, but, um, that's what, how he chose to do it, of course, he had, um, public backing, cause it was public dollars that did it, but they were in such a crisis with services. For, um, folks, and he was tired of the constant recycling people with mental health issues. It's, it's just a, it, you know, criminalize people that have mental health issues. We have a, a, I won't say her age, or a woman who. That's what we have, that's what we can do for her, and she should be in a hospital.
What town was that, Rhonda?
I think it was Rapid City, I'll date for the article.
I was reading something about that, something.
Did I, I, I.
I don't, I don't remember reading.
Yeah. So.
So if, if everybody that we screen that has an issue goes and gets help, how short are we actually at services? I mean, what, what, I mean, what's our capacity in the, in, in the private individuals we have providing services now?
In this community?
Yeah.
Oh, small.
No, I know, but I'm just saying, that, that's what I'm saying, is so, so if, if.
Good question.
Cause like you said, Cas County has a situation where they have somebody that, but they're more adapting and finding the resources more than anything, they're not providing the resource.
Right, right.
Whereas Burley, I, I mean, we'd be talking about the concept of providing a behavioral health service that would compete with private industry, but at the same time, we have so many behavioral health problems. It's, it's like a drop in the bucket, would be my guess.
Right.
If we provided those services, but.
And, and then they're only there for generally, you know, our average length of stay is twelve days.
Yeah.
So most of them are there for two or three days.
Yeah, and that's my point though, is if you can use that, you're using the screening tool, you're using it as a collection situation, then you, you identify these individuals, you sign them up so they can get the services through Medicaid or Medicaid expansion. Then you do outpatient treatment with that individual, whether it's offsite, onsite, whatever, to provide dollars to offset that cost.
Yeah.
Then they're getting the services and you also have the NGL services that are being offset, so you're getting positives on both sides.
And I think having a conversation probably with Heartview in regards to maybe trying to get to an agreement with something like that, cause they have the, you know, Patrick Plumm, who's running the one up in Camden. And I think that they would be looking to possibly maybe expand into Devil's Lake, I always talked a little bit about that here recently. Uh, and maybe to reach out to them, see if they'd be interested in getting into a partnership to do something like that.
If it was done the right way, it'd be a huge opportunity for them too.
Right.
Right, I mean, because you're essentially giving them a, unfortunately, dang your infinite supply of people that are, you know, need these services.
It's like a built-in referral service, basically.
But we need to make sure they have.
So they need a one resource that they can apply, you know.
That's what I'm saying.
But then, but, but that's where, that's where getting these people signed up, you know, if we can do this on our end. I mean, and I minded. Yeah, we don't have a lot of resources to be serving these people, but people have done more with less, and I think the only wrong answer is to do nothing, and so.
We've proved to ourselves there's a need.
Right.
Yeah, I mean.
Oh, and then I just, we've all known there's been a need, and now we're starting to get some data to be able to back that a little bit.
And it's more horrifying than we thought it was gonna be.
Right.
As I said, we proved to ourselves that there's a need.
Yeah.
And we're missing people that, that short stays, three, four days, if, like, I know, just because what was going on at the jail, Amber was like, well, I was gonna go for the day, but they have this going on, they're locked, whatever's going on. So, I mean, there, and, and she doesn't get there because she was going on Wednesday, but she had. One of her ladies getting a really bad car accident, like, we bet, but anyway, so there have been things like that, so if we had a position dedicated to it, that those things would not happen, so, um.
Okay, what, what should we do now?
Shake, shake the coach.
I wish I knew, that's the question of the day.
We created all the big problem there, let's try to figure out what to do, or?
I know that we don't have staff, we have one staff person that could probably be credentialed to bill Medicaid for doing that screening, no, I have two probably. Um. They do have the drops.
I gotta ask this question, did Burley and Morton County, did they build this wing into that jail for this purpose?
Well, they don't, I guess, yeah, they don't provide services.
They don't, they're just directing.
It's much like Cas, I mean, they're, they're just making connections with them while they're in the facility and getting them connected, so when they leave, they're getting into services.
They have two.
Yeah, they're, the only places that you're gonna find, they're actually doing services within the facilities are gonna be your DOCR facilities.
And, and that's, and that's where I'm getting at, I don't know if it worked or not, but the whole point is, is that we know we can't collect for services in the facility, so it's a complete net zero. But if you could find a way to have the person staffed and you could offset those costs with services outside of the facility that could be reimbursed, reimbursable through Medicaid or some type of private insurance. You could at least, it would be a complete sinkhole and we'd be providing services at the same time.
We could think about that some.
Something to think about, I guess, I, it's just a spin wall, and but.
Yeah, it, it is a spin, it's, I mean.
Well, at some point, we've gotta reinvent the wheel a little bit, because it's not working.
Yeah.
It's just that simple.
How can we find out, like, Burley and Morton, what they're doing in Cas, what their results are, to see if there is a win-win at the end of this tunnel? You know, are, are we just going down a dead end?
Well.
I don't know, I mean, can we find some data that, that they can give to us?
And again, it's a little bit different because of their sizes, like in, in Cascom, with their, the program that they've done, they were actually able to shut down a whole pod, which eliminated seven full-time positions, and then, so they took three of them and moved them over into this role. So they save four full-time positions by shutting down this pod, so that's, and, and it's working for them, because they're, they're, it's still new, they don't have a bottom data on it yet, but, uh, it's same with Burley. you know, that if they're able to keep a pod closed where they can save all those positions, that's what there's, that's, that's how they're experiencing success.
Well, and, and I think, you know, with stuff like this, right, you can look beyond just communities in North Dakota. I mean, there are other, there are other communities that are substantially similar that have been doing this for quite a while, but, so, so in a sense, it's, we're sort of reinventing the wheel, but... I think more importantly, we just need to start moving.
But we can go look at other places beyond North Dakota, but if you're going to look and try to get help from the state itself financially, you're going to have to prove that the problem is right here in North Dakota. And we need to address it. You know, if we want to get help from the legislature, or the governor, or whoever, money-wise, we've got to prove that, that it's here, you know?
And they are stepping up somewhat, I mean, I think they had with seven and a half million dollars on the justice, justice reimbursement, behavioral health stuff, and now they're the governors, but it's nineteen, which is good.
Right.
It's a start, but I think nineteen million's probably just a...
Drop.
It's a drop, compared to what it could cost to do what needs to happen, basically.
Because, yeah, the Free Through Recovery Program is basically at the back end of it, people coming out of prison.
Right.
We want to eliminate them from getting there, so that's why I'm hoping they expand it to the prevention rather than, you know, the action.
Well, and, and nobody wants to really invest in prevention because it involves a counterfactual, right? In other words, in other words, you don't know what would have happened if you hadn't done anything, and it makes it a really hard sell.
Yeah.
We did do without a tending care, keeping them out of the system if we can, you know?
Right.
And I think that's being successful. You know, if we can figure out how to catch us before they get into the habit of just reoffending something and getting back into the safe house and...
And I, I think what Lucas is saying is, what we say in the business is, we can't measure what didn't happen.
Right.
And so...
I mean, so, so I can see how that's a problem, but I think at some point, right, you know, we, we listened to the Oakdale people, and they came in and said, we've got basically the worst problems in the state, right? And we, and we heard these numbers here tonight, we know the numbers of, of people that are being born at Mercy Hospital with drugs in their system, and they're all related, right? It's all, it's all, it's all cut from the same cloth, and so my point is, is I think at some point, I, I have to agree with Adam. I mean, it, it's basically, even if Ramsey has to take a stand alone, a stand has got to be taken. I mean, hope they'll along with us if we have to.
Do you want to do a point that happens?
I, I know, but to me, to me, even, even, yeah, but even, even the costs that don't come in the form of a bill that comes worth its commission, trust me, the bill's being paid.
Oh, it's getting paid, I agree with you.
It's being paid every single day.
Okay.
Yeah, I know what you're saying, yeah.
Lost productivity, just not being able to find enough employees and workers, because there's people that are not able to make it to work because of all kinds of law enforcement costs.
You just can have stuff out of the box and do it, huh?
Well, I mean, we have to have some type of a plan, we can't just do it. But I mean, we have to at least examine and put together some type of a thought process, as well as some type of an idea of what the cost incurred would be and, and how you, you know, reimbursable type things, and figure it out, but I mean, we got to try something.
Robert, Rhonda, who do you need at the table to get this thing moving?
Well, it's, obviously, for us, it's going to start, you know, the Law Enforcement Center board. You know, with that, I, the, the financials I'm going to present to them tomorrow morning are not going to be very pretty. So, you know, when we're already starting at a situation like that, it's, it's the, the funding sources, you know? The people that are going to help and have an understanding of Medicaid are going to be able to help us push this through the state to get it to where there's a billable avenue for those, for these services.
But in...
That'd be a start.
And we could take someone and set them at the jail in, in a private room, and we could take applications with a, we could do it. I mean, that, that would, some of the things are non, are net zero, they don't cost anything. The, the case management piece, if they had, I, I, you know, the case management piece, it's a, it's a, it's a position. It's a one-position case management piece, um, and that's going to be the hard...
Yeah. Well, and I'll continue, like, I'll, I'll, you know, and I've, I've really started to become pretty decent friends with Andy Frobig down in Cass, and try to get the model that they've created, because if we can create one position, like, they've got three, and we can utilize that, the way that they're utilizing theirs to connect in those services, to make sure that they have the transportation, that they're getting the housing, that, you know, their need, all their needs are met, you know, that, that's probably a way that I can start by eliminating what he's already doing down there. And I can, you know, I'll reach out to, to Burley Morton and see, how are you, are you guys, do you have an avenue to build for that full-time position? Are you able to, to recoup any of the costs for that through Medicaid or through whatever, maybe other sources might be out there that we're not aware of?
There, there might be, but I just can't think of one single way.
Well, it's something, yeah, we're trying, there's one of those...
The Medicaid anyway, there might be another way, but...
Uh, you know what, the other thing I'm going to do, just after listening to this, I'm going to get in contact with my aunt. Because if anybody, if anybody would know, you know, where, what strings to pull to unravel the tapestry, if you heard. So I'll, I'll get in contact with her as well.
She knows.
And see if she knows anything we don't. Um, but I think that you guys should, should get started, you know, looking at a solution, and, and if there's anything that I can do personally, or in my capacity, here in this chair, help you all out. I want to, because this is important to me, and I think it's really important to this community.
Right.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Lucas.
Anything else?
Bad news.
Bad news bears. This is supposed to be quick.
Quick, the quick down here.
I'm going to take forever.
A hundred and thirty...
That's all right.
Well, that's it, thank you guys for being on.
Need to be addressed, such for a quarter and a... Stay on it, he's just informed. New business, approval of your license.
I was just going to say, we're drinking, but that...
Motion to further beer license, there's a second, second, all in favor, say aye.
I got a quick question.
You do?
Oh, did you?
Your licenses, you want one?
It says, yeah, yeah. So these other businesses here cannot leave this province? Yeah. Nope. I just wanted to know, you had any...
There's, these has a city license.
Yep.
They don't have an actual establishment in the county, so that's why it says any county event.
Okay.
So any, anybody else could put any event on their physical state, your license, be like we did.
Yeah, that's where I just wanted to go.
They're just the only ones that...
Yep, that go out.
Yep.
Yeah.
Four-H Center. They went to the Four-H Center, they went up to the...
Peterson Marina, yeah.
Yeah. That's usually where they come in, like...
Okay, we've got two letters, a change for here, we'll move into that. Questions there? Approval.
One at a time or together?
Do it together.
So moved.
Motion, there's a second, any other questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Approval of the board appointments. So this is all these, or is, or the, the Law Enforcement Center, is the commissioner of the...
Yes. So it would be Beth, Kristen, and Christie, and then the...
Oh, okay, I didn't see the commissioner.
I'll, I'll make a motion to reappoint, uh, the three individuals for their different jobs.
Okay.
Sir, can...
We have a motion and a second to, for the board appointments. Any other questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Okay, now, approval of commission appointments, okay? I would say...
Say, you guys want to continue with it?
Right, okay, I think we've probably seen some success yesterday, so...
So with the headache, one day you can...
I spent a half an hour with Boerlinger on the phone again yesterday, so... He had me on the phone, and Rob called me, left a message, that non-compliance had been part of Boerlinger. He moved the paper up the table, so the higher-ups could make the decision, now, lift the Trojan notice, so... Which I didn't believe would happen before long, I wouldn't say it's going to happen this week, but I'm not sure. He wouldn't commit to it, I tried to corner him, but it didn't work, but that could be any announcements to it.
I'll make a motion to reappoint, uh, Mark and Ed to the Law Enforcement Center.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion, another fact, and a second, and a discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Approval of nineteen contract for the village, okay? Not the same thing, Sandy? Pretty much. Yeah, last year.
Ninety-dollar difference.
Ninety bucks?
Ninety bucks.
Okay.
Motion to approve.
And motion to approve the contract for the village, second, second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Visitors and delegations, I'm going to go to the contract list. Say something, I don't know. Announcements, any announcements from anybody, was that enough today? Nothing? Nothing, no. Okay, we're adjourned.